Okay, Chair, I have the devices rolling and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Anthony. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. This is Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. It is 6:00 and we are holding this meeting via teleconference. We have a full quorum and we will are now called to order and we'll start the meeting with a moment of silence. All right, thank you, everyone. And our first order of business is the election of a chair and vice-chair because we have lost our chairperson, Jesse Barone. So do we have a nomination for chair? Joe, I think I saw your hand first.
I'd like to nominate Susan.
All right, and I see some head nods. Scott, shall we do this as a package?
Well, I would say, is there any other nominations?
Any other nominations? I could nominate someone. I could do Joe and he'd be really mad at me.
Yeah. We have a nomination. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, well, and we'll do a vote, okay? All right, Commissioner Graffia.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Commissioner Oshin.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
All right, motion passes 4-0. We now have a new chair.
All right, now we need a vice-chair.
We do.
All right, do I have a nomination for a vice-chair? Joe, you got mine.
I would like to nominate Bill.
All right, do we have a second on that? I see Jen nodding.
Yes, I will second that.
Okay, any other nominations? No? Okay, so I guess we get the roll call again.
All right, Commissioner Graffia.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Oshin.
Yes.
All right, motion passes 4-0. We now have a chair and vice-chair.
Great, and we haven't had interviews yet for the fifth seat?
It's the, yeah, the opening is listed on the city's website, it's under Hot Topics, and closes on the 30th of this month. So, yeah, so I had a couple folks, you know, inquire about it, so hopefully we're getting a couple applications in.
Good, good. It's a great fun group, so hopefully we get some interested people. Any Planning Commissioner announcements? Seeing a bunch of head shakes. Then we will move on to the public comment period. Generally, this is a time for comments for things that are not on our agenda, or if you would like to speak to something that is on the agenda but you can't wait for that time period, you may speak now. And let me look at my participants here. Do we have anybody with a hand raised, Anthony?
At this point, let me double-check here, but Chair Stewart, I do not see any raised hands in the queue. Thank you.
Great. Then we will move on. Let's see, we have no presentations, so I think we're going to go to our consent calendar, which is just the current and advanced planning processing list. Did anybody need to pull anything on that? Seeing head shakes. Do I have a motion to approve the current and advanced planning processing list? Anybody? Bill, unmute yourself. There you go.
Yep, I'll move to approve it.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
There we go. So, any other discussion? All right, let's have a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Oshin.
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0, thank you.
Thank you. So now we're moving on to our public hearings. The first one is an appeal of MUP 20-02, and we have Nancy Hubbard as our contact person on this. Hi, Nancy.
Hi. All right, here we go, presentation time. Okay, can you see a presentation?
Yes.
All right. So this is an appeal of a minor modification, which was approved for a change in use of an existing motel at 2460 Main. The project is currently operating as a 27-room motel. The current owner applied for a minor use permit December 15th, 2020, to change the use from hotel-motel to supportive housing. The application was reviewed and deemed complete on February 2nd, 2021. Following a public notice period, an administrative decision for approval was made and a permit was issued on February 24th, 2021. An appeal was filed on March 1st, 2021 by Ashley Smith. No other appeals were filed. Stated grounds for the appeal and followed by the staff response are: The MUP, Minor Use Permit, does not adequately address the impacts to Police Department, Fire Department, Chamber of Commerce, and Tourism. Staff response is that the application for a change in use was routed to both the police and the fire departments and were approved with conditions. Chamber of Commerce, which is not a city agency, has no involvement in the approval of city permits. Number two, the minor use permit does not adequately address measures to ensure the safety of a surrounding neighborhood. Staff response is supportive housing is considered a residential use and it's allowed by right in this zoning district. Projects approved for supportive housing shall be subject only to those restrictions that apply to other residential uses in the same zone. Additionally, California Fair Employment and Housing Act expressly prohibits discrimination through public or private land use practices that make housing opportunities unavailable to protected populations. And in this case, that's people in substance abuse recovery programs. And then there, number three, is the minor use permit does not adequately address the facility curriculum or program or facility employees such as physicians and counselors. And the Morro Bay Municipal Code requires a minor use permit for change in use. Information related to the facility operations was provided by the applicant, was posted on the city website in response to public inquiry. However, the oversight of operations of the program and curriculum is under the purview of the State of California under their licensing criteria. The appeal, the complaint, appeal issue number one, is a request to put the permit on hold to allow a public hearing. Staff response is approval of supportive housing does not require a public hearing. In fact, pursuant to Morro Bay Municipal Code and state law, applications for supportive housing must be approved administratively. Furthermore, jurisdictions cannot impose conditions on this use that are not imposed on other residential uses of the same type in the same zoning district. It says appeal issue number one, but it's actually appeal issue number two. Request review by the Chief of Police and the Chief of Fire and the Chamber of Commerce. And again, the request for a change in use was routed to the Police Department and the Fire Department, both which approved or conditionally approved the application. The Chamber of Commerce is not a city agency and has no involvement in review of city-issued permits. The appeal requested relief or action is a request to delay the permit to have a public hearing. And approval of the public hearing cannot be required pursuant to Morro Bay Municipal Code and state law. However, through this appeal and the public hearing tonight, this action has been addressed. Number two, get review by Police, Fire, and Chamber of Commerce. And again, the city departments reviewed and approved or conditionally approved. So this action has been addressed. The Chamber of Commerce is not a city agency and not consulted on approval of city permits. Conditions of approval versus requirements. The existing conditions specific to this project are that the existing permit includes a condition that the facility provide the city with final operational state license and notify the city of any status change in that license. All of the other conditions are standard conditions of approval. Planning conditions of approval. Number two is, just to cover the ability of the Planning Commission or Community Development Director to add conditions and restrictions. They can be added, they can add project-specific conditions of approval as long as they are not restrictive in a way that a multifamily project would not be conditioned. For example, a condition asking for onsite point of contact for the facility would be reasonable. However, restrictions such as restrictions on parking density or restrictions on the client's activities would not be allowed. And that concludes the presentation. The city planning staff's recommendation is for denial of the appeal and to uphold the director's approval by accepting Planning Commission Resolution 08-21.
Okay, thank you very much. First off, is there any ex parte disclosure on any part of this project? No? Okay. Any questions for staff? Joe?
Does the applicant, not the appellant, but the applicant, have any experience at all operating these kinds of facilities?
They provided a reference for another first responders' facility in, I want to say, Lake Hughes, California.
That's my question.
Okay, anybody else for staff? All right, then I think we can open up for public comment and, let's see.
Susan, would you like me to share the public comment screen?
Share the contact information, and then I think we will try and do a timing of this. And I think, do we hear first from the appellant or the applicant?
If you hear from the appellant first, then they have 10 minutes.
Okay, and the appellant and the applicant each have 10 minutes? So if we have Ashley Smith in the queue... I am not actually seeing her.
I see Ashley Smith with her hand raised. Would you like me to unmute?
Go ahead and let her speak first. Thank you.
Okay, Ashley, you are unmuted.
Hello, thank you for being here tonight. My name is Ashley Smith and I am the person who filed this appeal. My appeal included three main concerns. The first is the impact that the facility will have on the Morro Bay Police and Fire Department. Do our current police and fire department have the staff and resources to respond to a facility of this size in addition to their current caseload and call volume? Your staff responded that both departments have reviewed and approved or conditionally approved this application. I hope to find more information on the approval and conditions in this meeting tonight. And I ask that the question just mentioned be answered. I also asked for a response from the Chamber of Commerce, but was told that they are not a city agency and have no involvement with review or approval for city permits, which I am certain local businesses were sad to hear as our local businesses will be affected, especially the Mayan, which has been in our community for years, excuse me. My second point of concern is the measures that the city will enforce to ensure the safety of the surrounding neighborhood. My question was not answered in your staff response. The staff responded that MUP allows a change of uses, use from motel to supportive housing, which is allowed by right in every residential zone and some commercial zones in Morro Bay. State Assembly Bill 2162 prohibits jurisdiction from creating or imposing restrictions that are not applied to any other residential dwelling of the same type in the same zone. The city's review of this application included thorough research in the requirements of supportive housing to ensure the decision to approve this permit and the resulting conditions of approval met the requirements of the MBMC Housing Element and the state guidelines without bias. So the question of safety wasn't addressed. While stated that your research was thorough, it was clearly only thorough in ways to get the proposal approved. Where is your thorough research on the impact that this will have on our community, home values, crime, surrounding neighborhoods, and most importantly, citizens who are walking past this facility? The California Housing Accountability Act allows supportive housing to be denied under five very limited circumstances. In California Government Code 65589D, it states: Denial of supportive housing can be made by local governments if the housing would have specific adverse impact on public health or safety and there is no feasible way to mitigate the impact. In Exhibit A, under the Minor Use Permit finding, number one, you stated this facility will not be detrimental to health and safety and general welfare of persons residing or working in the surrounding neighborhood. I have read email after email from concerned residents of North Morro Bay who are telling you this facility is not in a safe location. How then were you able to come, were able to come to the conclusion that it will be safe? Where is the study or survey to support your finding? My last point of the appeal, the MUP does not adequately address the facility curriculum, program, or the facility employees such as physicians and counselors. Your staff response was state licensing preempts any procedural of the city of Morro Bay. While I understand this, I had hoped the city would have required further documentation or proof of licensing from the Department of Healthcare and/or from the State Department of Drug and Alcohol Program to err on the side of caution as this facility is the first of its size and nature in our town. The current additional information on this subject by the applicant is still unclear. There is no mention if they currently hold licenses from the state to run this type of facility. It is further unclear who will be held accountable and responsible for running this facility. There are four different names involved. Joyce Keshar, who owns the hotel, Brian Dare Vartanian, who applied for the permit, Organs Nardos as the point of contact, and Justin Franklin, who is listed on the registry. We don't know each person mentioned, their level of experience or involvement. There has been no identified compliance officer, nor has there been any mention of where the certified staff and doctors needed to accommodate this facility will come from and their professional experience. It is vital for a drug and alcohol rehab center to have a solid staff and owners who have experience and education, not only for the success of its patients, but for the safety of their clients, staff, and neighborhood encircling the facility. The applicant has not shown by documentation nor any other means that they are capable of running a successful and safe facility. In closing, since the hotel changed of ownership to Ms. Keshar in 2018, the hotel has been unmaintained. There has been ongoing construction, tarps on the buildings for extended periods of time, and industrial-sized dump bins in the parking lot well before COVID. Based on this, how can we believe that a drug rehab facility will be run any better? I am not against this type of facility. I am against the size and its location. It will have an impact on our public safety, not only in the surrounding neighborhood, but all of Morro Bay. You have received many responses and will hear many responses tonight sharing the same concern of public safety. Since COVID, there has been an increase in crime in North Morro Bay with converters being stolen and just recently a drive-by shooting. The Planning Commission has a way and a right to deny this supportive housing based on the adverse impact this will have on public safety, as stated in the California Housing Accountability Act. Please listen to our concerns and help find an alternative location for this facility away from our schools and out of the heart of residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Do we have, it looks like we have Mr. Organis in the queue?
Yes, Chair, would you like me to unmute Mr. Organis?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do.
He is the applicant.
Okay, Mr. Organis, you are unmuted, or, a second.
Thank you for having us here in this meeting. First and foremost, Mrs. Devakannan is with me here too, in the same room, and can hear this conversation as well. First of all, I want to tell you my experience. I'm a program director, running the facilities for the last 15 years, court-ordered programs, absolute control transitional counseling center, Lake Hughes, and also Lax Treatment Center in Las Vegas. I'm gonna start responding to the last questions brought by, I think Ms. Smith was her last name. First and foremost, before getting certified, we have to get approval from the city conditional use permit which we applied for. That's the beginning. Second of all, we're gonna operate not just a house, but it's gonna be a residential treatment center, which just goes under the jurisdiction of what is called so however, whatever you say in your city planning commission, but it's gonna be Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Center, which is governed by California Department of Healthcare Services, and they have licensing and certification division, which after we apply, they come. First and foremost, they check the safety and security of the building, of the neighborhood, of the location for the patients, and then they check background checks on all of the staff which will work there, their certification, and we have to have, in accordance with our application, to get licensed. We have to have an MD as a medical director. We have to have a psych, the psychologist or LMFT, licensed and managed therapist, as a therapist. And besides that, we have to have California-certified substance abuse counselors to provide the counseling services to the patients. On top of that, we have to approve to the department that we can supervise them 24 hours, and supervision is done by RADTs, which stands for Registered Alcohol and Drug Technicians. That means they have all trained for CPR for state, or CPR for state certified with code of conduct, code of ethics signed, and trained to provide services overnight, not to overload Fire Department and Police Department with minor stuff. And as far as the other questions regarding the size of the facility, the size really doesn't matter because the department requires that for every 10 patients, we have at least one technician, one counselor, and one therapist at the facility, which means they will be 24 hours supervised day and night long. And our goal is, there is no curriculum, first and foremost, because this is not a school. What we do at the facility, when a patient comes in, we do assessment and evaluation, and based on assessment and evaluation, treatment plan is, we're creating a treatment plan for each patient individually, which will address their medical needs, their psychological needs, and their social needs as well. And treatment plan has a goals, and to reach those goals, we do it through individual therapy sessions, individual counseling sessions, different types of group therapy sessions like educational group, peer group, process group sessions. And each patient has his, also his own caseworker, which means on top of just taking care of their substance abuse treatment, substance abuse problems, at the same time, while they're with us, we're trying to reintegrate them to the society. If they have family problems, like domestic violence case, whatever they have, we're trying to resolve that. If they have traffic tickets, now unmet, court appearances, we're trying to create a way for the individuals to be reinstated, to restart, and at the same time, having a solid foundation for continuing recovery. Therefore, lots of community organizations from Morro Bay community will be involved too, because we're taking them to NAIA meetings around the Morro Bay or in Morro Bay. We're taking them to the community parks for hiking. We're taking for spiritual, spiritual meetings at the parks. We're taking them to the beach. And as far as the tourism, we applied for 26 patients. And they, after several periods, after they finishing their detoxification period and they're in the residential treatment phase, they also are allowed to get visitations, which means there are gonna be more tourists coming to the city, just to come see their loved ones, per se. Any other questions you have? We're here to answer you. And like I said, besides the Department of Healthcare Services, we also will apply for JCO, which stands for Joint Commission for Accreditation of Health Organizations. And being accredited by JCO, it's a highest standard federally. Without that standard, we cannot even have a medical contract. We cannot provide services to people who have medical insurance, insurance covered by the state with other words. And we cannot even accept highest pay insurance policies. And the other concern I saw Ms. Smith had was regarding the prison population. Are we gonna accept anybody recently released from prisons? The answer will be definitely not, because in order to be accepted to the program, a person has to have current addiction problem, not from two years ago, not from three years ago. Which means for prison population, outpatient treatment programs are more sufficient because when they're coming out of prison, we assume that they were not using while being in a prison. So the criteria, ASM criteria, which we're accepting it to start their residential programs with us, they're not meeting these criterias. Other patients will be there, of course, who have court order. For example, if somebody was arrested a couple of times for possession or stealing stuff to kind of keep up his habits, instead of incarceration, they're getting alternative sentencing to do residential treatment program? Yes, we will have this type of patient, but no parolees. And parolee means a person released from prison under certain conditions. We will have no parolees at our facility, but approbationers, meaning people who, instead of doing the jail time at a correctional facility, got an opportunity to do treatment with us. Even if, like I said, if there are any other questions. And yeah, another thing I saw in a roster, the audits, we're gonna be audited minimum of twice a year by Department of Healthcare Services and every year by Joint Commission. That's mandatory. Besides, there is a compliance department. Every time anybody writes any type of complaint against the facility or against operation, Compliance Division does also unannounce audits, meaning they're not gonna announce, oh, we're gonna get checked on you, none of that. So they're just showing up by the door saying, the Compliance Department, we have a complaint. This is the complaint, that's what the complaint says, and they do thorough audits because they're, at the end, they're responsible for our licensing. So in order to keep your license, we have to be in compliance with all federal, state, and also local rules on regulations.
Okay, thank you. If you could stay nearby, we'll hear from other public comment, and then we may have some questions. some questions for you later.
Sure.
Thank you. Anthony, who else is in the queue?
Thank you, Chair. I see Rich Donald with his hand up. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute him.
Thank you.
Okay, Rich, you are unmuted.
Great, thank you. My name is Rich Donald. I've recently become the general manager of the Roadway Inn. I've been working with the owners here. When I started the position, I wasn't told originally that it was being turned into a treatment facility, and it was just kind of an unusual occurrence that prior to my taking the position here, I last worked for the state of Alaska as a therapist in a dual master's position, and before that, I worked for College Hospital Costa Baysa as a behavioral therapist in specializing in dual diagnosis. And before that, I worked in the Florence Flitman Center for Children and Families. So it was just kind of a happy occurrence that most of my background happened to be dealing with drugs and alcohol. In being here for the last three and a half weeks, I've had a chance to talk with a lot of the public. There was definitely a lot of people who had been concerned about the fact that not a lot of information was being shared between the management and the public. I got in touch with Mr. Wolf from the Avocado Shack and a number of other business owners around, and the fears that were being conveyed, it seemed primarily that they were not understanding what type of facility was being built and what they planned on doing here. People had heard some term of free range, meaning that people who were staying here were allowed to leave and go as they pleased, and that absolutely is not going to be the case. Other people had voiced concerns that once the funding had run out from people's government checks, they would be released onto the street, and again, not something that's going to occur. I also wanted to put myself out there, that I've started a Google group called North Morro Bay Community Forum, and I'm just putting that out there for people to come, if they have questions about the facility, how the facility is going to operate, I will be there to try to be a bridge between them and the management of the facility. And if the members of the public also have questions for me, and they want to come down to the hotel, I'm going to be here. So I'm going to be a resident here. Some of the things that people told me that they were worried about, I wouldn't want to see those occurrences in my community either. So happy to make myself available.
Thank you very much. Anthony, do we have anybody else in the queue with their hand up?
Yes, Chair, I see some more hands in the queue. Okay, it looks like R. Michaletti?
Okay.
I've unmuted you, R. Michaletti.
Thank you. You hear me now?
You are?
Okay. I live in 2217 Emerald Circle. I'm wondering if anyone has checked with other communities where these comparable treatment facilities are in place, and what is the cost to the cities that they're involved with, and also what is the impact to those communities? That's one question. Second question is, where will these residents come from? And will they be locked in every night? Is that part of the criteria? And can we then honestly say that this is not a for-profit run facility, it's a state-run facility, or is it a for-profit run facility? And if it's a for-profit run facility, will they pay real estate taxes? All of that together. So that's kind of a summary of where I would go.
All right, thank you, Mr. Michaletti. Who's next in our queue?
Okay, thank you, Chair. I see A. Hook. A. Hook, I have unmuted you.
Hi, yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name's April Hook, and I just wanted to, you know, I've been in the community since I was three months old, and I am well into my 40s, and I have been an active resident here for a long time. When I heard about this, I have to join my voice with Ashley Smith in saying that I don't feel that the safety issues are adequately being addressed for the surrounding community. And I would also, I'm really interested in what your last speaker, the answer to the last speaker's questions are too. Those were some very important questions. I also would just like to ask, perhaps, who was the administrative council, so to speak, to make this final decision? And my last comment would be, would you personally, Mr. Nardos, like to live next to this facility of 27 people with drug and alcohol addiction? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, anybody else with their hand up?
Yes, Chair, I do see one more hand raised. Emily McCree.
Okay, Emily, I believe we are ready for you.
Okay, Emily, you should be unmuted. There we go.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Hello. Yes, my name is Emily McCree. I am a lifelong resident of the Central Coast. My family is from here. We've always lived here. I have two small children, or elementary-age children, and I wanted to kind of start off by saying that I do appreciate the concerns behind this appeal, but I also believe that they're misguided. I really appreciate the applicant's responses, and I felt like he gave a lot of clarity to some of the distinctions and questions. I can't help but feel like this is a clear-cut case of the not-in-my-backyard mentality. It's not a new ideology, it's been going on for decades, and most recently, its main target is these, is treatment facilities. There have been studies done, you know, there's been, I read a bunch of research about this, there's no evidence port fears that crime will increase, violence, all of this stuff. To me, these comments are really just perpetuating the stigma that is attached to substance use disorders. People think they know what addiction looks like, and the truth is, is that there's many faces to addiction. It doesn't discriminate class, race, creed, and its infliction does not make you a corrupt person, which is what is being said when you say, "I fear for my children, my children have to walk by," the safety, the crime rates. What you're saying is these people are morally corrupt, they're violent, they're criminals, and that's just not, it's not true. It's just not true. There are, the people that are seeking help at these facilities are nurses, teachers, doctors, lawyers, they are functioning members of society that are voluntarily seeking treatment for substance use disorders. I had some statistics as well, you know, approximately 70,000 people a year die from drug or alcohol-related overdoses. Me personally, growing up in this area, I can't even count on both of my hands how many people I have personally known that have died from alcohol. The permit is conditional on the facility being licensed through the state, which is a huge process, where it's thoroughly reviewed, staffing ratios, you know, all of this stuff. It is a very thorough process, and this permit isn't saying they can operate, it's saying that they're allowed to get the minor use permit. I realize my time is up.
Your time is up, but thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, anybody else with their hand up?
Yes, Chair, I do see a number of hands raised. Tim Gailey, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you. Okay, we're unmuted, Tim, go ahead.
All right, thanks. My name's Tim Gailey. I live in North Morro Bay. I've grown up here, and I currently live here with my wife and raise two young kids. I'm a fire captain, and I've had the opportunity to respond to facilities similar to this, and I'm actually in agreeing, in agreement with most of my neighbors in saying that this isn't an appropriate location for the facility. I totally agree with having these facilities, I think it's an important part of services that we can offer to communities and to, you know, people that really need that help. I think it's a great thing, but this location just does not work in our city. When you look at Morro Bay, you have two main schools, you have Morro Bay High, and you have Delmore Elementary, and this is proposed to be right in the middle, like right in the heart of those schools, and that's just too dangerous for our kids. I coach soccer, basketball, baseball, and a lot of these kids have to walk or ride their bikes to get to practices, and parents will not feel comfortable letting their kids go back and forth in front of a facility like that. So respectfully, I just think that we should consider an alternate site, and I think that there's a lot of good alternate sites in Morro Bay, it's not right between the two schools. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gailey. Next person in the queue?
Yes, Chair, I have Dave Smith. Okay, Dave, you are unmuted. Are you there, Dave Smith?
There we go. Is that better?
Yes, we can hear you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, my, I have, I've not quite completed my degree in mental health counseling, but I have been working in the CDCR with a lot of people for most of 15 years. I have been involved with some of the zoning issues, and I really don't understand how this has become, how this has become acceptable for the local zoning rules. My grandchildren live right near there, I've dealt with a lot of people, and in relation to Ms. McCree's comments about not in my backyard, well, yeah, that's what zoning is all about, is to make sure that the uses and buildings and the people in your community are appropriate for your area. As far as these people, the comment was they're not drug crazed or alternate personality, whatever, that is true when they're under treatment and when they're becoming sober, but an addict is not able to think clearly when they're under the influence, when they're being driven for their next score. So you can't say that there's no risk here. Certainly, I agree that on their best-case scene or scenario, it could be a lovely concept, but we have to pay attention to the potential for the worst case, and this is not right. The zoning commission has let us down, this is now a public comment area, the people that are gonna be grossly impacted are trying to get some reason put forth here. I think that they should be listened to. I think that's enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next in the queue?
Yes, Chair, I see Diane Walling. Okay, Diane, I'm trying to unmute you here, all right?
Can you hear me?
Unmuted, Diane, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Diane Walling, and I'm a resident in Morro Bay, and for your information, my employment, my employment background includes family-specific county mental health, the impatient lockdown, the impatient lockdown unit, California Men's Colony, and Atascadero State Hospital. I have had much exposure to people who have a substance abuse problem and their criminal activity. Arganis Nardos is named as contact for the rehab part of this project. If you are not aware of his criminal activity, let me enlighten you. In 2009, Arganis Nardos and four accomplices were arrested by ICE for selling fraudulent documents to at least 20 Armenian felons so they would avoid deportation. These felons were convicted murderers and rapists. These forged documents sold for as much as $35,000 each. Him and his, him and his accomplices pled guilty in September of 2010. Mr. Nargonis' criminal activity includes obstruction of justice, fraud, assault, bribery, and court-mandated drug tests. His past criminal history should be a red flag for all concern. Many of these facilities, after they are up and running, increase occupancy up to five people per room. This costs taxpayers as much as $500 per day, per person. As depicted by Mary Mott Svetor to the editor in Bay News on March 11, 2021, when their Medicare benefits run out, they are put back on the street and no way to get home. This will create more of a homeless problem in Morro Bay, as if we don't have enough of this. I also want to bring to your attention, along with criminal activity due to extensive drug use, there are a lot of pedophiles in these type of facilities. I have firsthand knowledge of this. Lastly, the owners of this property have no experience with regard to a rehab facility. This will be a cash cow for them, and this city will suffer the consequences. Do we really want to turn Morro Bay into Los Angeles or San Francisco? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walling. Who is next in the queue?
Thank you, Chair. I see Eric Dudley.
Thanks.
Okay, Eric, I'm trying to unmute you.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. My name is Eric Dudley, and I've lived in Morro Bay for 41 years, and I have six concerns I would like to express to you. Number one, the failure to communicate from my city government back to me. I've sent numerous emails with little or no response. For example, on March 11, I sent a group email to the city of Morro Bay, no response. March 13, I sent a follow-up, someone please respond. March 15, I did get a response from City Manager Scott Collins. He told me he forwarded my questions to the applicant. He did not answer any of my questions, neither did any of my other government that I sent the emails to. Very disappointing. Number two, zoning. The city was not obligated to approve this application because the zoning of the site did not match the state mandate requirements for this type of project. It has to be rezoned. Number three, safety. My safety concerns are that statistically large portions of patients in these facilities are criminals. This site is less than one-half mile from three public schools and three city parks. Why are they erecting a high-wall security fence around the entire property if these are not high-risk individuals? My daughter walked past this site every day going to and from my school. It's very disappointing to see this come right down the street. I live 1,000 feet away, I was not notified it was happening. A neighbor showed me the notification, it was vague and listed wrong phone numbers. Number four, parking. If you have a residence in Morro Bay, you have to have sufficient parking. They have 27 units, two people per unit, and five or six staff. Do they have 60 parking places on site? Why should they be allowed to have fewer parking spaces than another property owner in Morro Bay? That is not fair. Number five, negative financial impact. The city of Morro Bay gets a bed tax for hotels. There are 27 rooms, two people per room, an average of two meals every day, and before COVID, there's an average 200 days per year occupancy. That's 21,600 meals that people that stay in that motel would eat in our restaurants. That's over $300,000 at only $15 a meal that our restaurants will be living. Also, it affects gift shops, gas stations, movie theater, and golf courses. My final number six is the applicant's background. I want each of you to do a Google search after your meeting tonight on the people involved in this application. It's outright scary why this application would have even been considered for approval, noting the criminal background involved.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley, for your comments. And our next person?
Yes, Chair, Susan McDaniel.
Thank you.
Okay, Susan, you are unmuted. I am not seeing her microphone. Susan, do you have a microphone? Susan, do you have a microphone? Um, at this point, Chair, I don't see a microphone icon.
Hi. Yeah, there we go. We've got you.
Okay, we can hear you.
Okay, and that's loud enough? Yes. Okay. My name is Susan McDaniel. I've lived in Morro Bay for over 35 years. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist who's worked both at the California Men's Colony and also for the Crisis Intervention Team with the County of San Luis Obispo. I've had many dealings that revolved around drug and alcohol issues. Um, I have several concerns, but they fall into two categories. The first is, it seems to me there's a certain amount of mission creep going on. Initially, this was, um, set out to be housing for first responders. Then it seemed to move to supporting housing, supportive housing. Then finally, to drug treatment and detox. I don't think that this Lake Hughes example that talked about, um, housing for first responders would really apply when you're considering people with substance abuse issues. And also, then, I really still have questions about the treatment strategies and accountability. There were quite a few different professionals that were listed as being on-site and providing services. But I noticed in the outline of what a daily, uh, schedule would be like, there were two hours of group therapy, and it said nothing about any of these other services, whether it was casework, social work, job training, uh, even one-on-one substance counseling. It just doesn't seem to me like this is very well thought out. And I really don't think that it's, has much chance for success unless treatment goals and treatment plans are made clear for not only a local residence, but for government officials to be able to make, um, decisions about. This is, this, to me, is a very unprofessional, um, outline of exactly the services that would be provided. Further, there still seems to be some question about whether this would be a locked or unlocked facility. And if, in fact, it's a voluntary facility, I'm not clear on exactly how this fencing situation would work. And why, as they said, it would be safe, why that fencing would even be necessary in the first place. It just doesn't seem to me that they are really consistent in either their mission statement or their way of trying to accomplish that mission statement. Therefore, I'm, um, definitely not in favor of this particular project and set up in this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Uh, next in the queue?
Uh, yes, Chair, I see Judy. I don't see a last name there, but Judy, I am unmuting you. Okay, you're free to give your testimony.
Hi, my name's Judy Setting. Thank you for an opportunity to speak on this. I've learned a lot from listening to everybody's comments, and I appreciate them. I've lived in Morro Bay for 52 years. My granddaughter is a third-generation Morro Bay High School student. Super proud of my community, as I'm sure you are. And I'm also a cost volunteer. And my main concern about this is how are these recipients being vetted? Are official registered sex offenders going to be permitted to be part of this residency? And that's just my biggest concern is that we don't seem to have the answers for the safety issues. And I don't think that, as a community, we want to put our children, even one child, at risk. So I, I would hope that we not put this on the table as a, as a possibility for Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, anybody else in the queue, Anthony?
Yes, Chair, thank you. I see phone number ending in 365. Okay, so you're gonna want to press star six if you want to try to unmute yourself. There we go.
Hi, this is Natalia Mizuelian. And I don't know quite where we are now because I got, um, something happened to my listening about 10 minutes ago. I was knocked off, and it took me a while to get back on. So are we still, what are we talking about now? The support home or?
Yes, it's still public comment about the supportive housing program.
Yes, well, um, I've, I've lived in Morro Bay since 1968. And all my kids went to school at Morro Bay High School. And, um, I lived in North Morro Bay as well as, um, in the Heights. So I, I know the town pretty well. And I can't imagine a place less suited for, um, any, any reason, except maybe it was a good price for the buyer. But for the town, I, I don't see it as an advantageous, um, use of city planning in any way. And, um, especially in these times when so many people are homeschooling, there's children all around. Every time I drive out Highway 46 and go by that intersection, I'm seeing youngsters walking along Main Street. And, um, you know, originally, I'm from Fresno. And I still own property over there and recently tried to get, um, uh, some, some kind of CBD place installed, um, in a building that I have. And they disallowed it because they said it was too close to a youth, um, center. So I don't know what kind of standards Morro Bay has, but it seems like we should at least have as high a standard as Fresno does. And, um, I, I just think we should rethink this and move, move it someplace else, like San Luis or San Simeon. Almost any place I can think of would be more appropriate. And, um, I don't think it's because of the, my own backyard, uh, concept. I'm curious as to whether the person who made that comment has any other ties to this happening. But, um, that's, that's all I'll say for now. I, um, I actually called about another issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next in the queue?
Yes, I see R. Tyler Smith with your hand raised. Okay, R. Tyler Smith, I'm unmuting you. There you are. You're unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hey, my name's Tyler Smith. I've been a resident of Morro Bay for almost 20 years. Um, I am also in the fire service and run many calls to facilities like this. Um, I'm hoping that you'll listen to the public on this one and vote no. Um, 90% of the comments in this meeting have been negative towards this facility with good reasons. We have serious, um, concerns about the safety of our community, of our kids, of our schools, and their surrounding communities. These facilities, when they first go in, boxes and everything looks great. Then stay up on these facilities, and they start to slide after a while. They become places that aren't well managed. Um, I am really urging you to vote no. Um, this facility is way too large for this area. It's right in between two schools. Kids walk by them every day. There's a park directly across the street. And there are huge red flags with, um, this facility. Huge red flags with the people who are trying to put it in. Um, and it is not a good location. It is not a good size. I am not against these facilities. I, I am against the location and the size of this facility without a doubt. It says in the state law that you can deny this facility based on safety concerns. You are hearing many of them tonight, but a lot. I don't know if you guys have ever had this many emails and comments from, um, the community here. This is very concerning. I urge you to vote no. Also, the revenue lost to the city. I know the city's had a hard time with revenue from the tourist industry going down due to COVID. This is gonna take revenue out of the city. This is not the answer for, um, us trying to bring revenue to our city. We're gonna lose the bed tax. We're gonna lose business, tourist business throughout the city. And, uh, it is not, this is not a good place for this. Um, and it's not the right time either. Um, I'm very concerned about the registration of people that are gonna be in this facility. Are there gonna be registered, you know, sex offenders? All it takes is one, one time to ruin everyone's lives. And this is not something that we should gamble with. I am urging you to vote no. Um, for the safety of our community and our kids and the surrounding neighborhoods, please listen to us. Please listen to the community and vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, next in the queue?
Uh, yes, Chair, I see Kristen Hedlund with her hand raised. Okay, Kristen, I'm unmuting you.
Thank you. My name is Donald Hedlund. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would like you to vote no against this facility. 27 rooms, 54 beds. These are, uh, substance abuse people. There is a need. However, we know within the ranks of substance abusers, there are a certain number of predators or people who are shady. I don't think it's inappropriate. It's within walking distance of Del Mar. I'm sure the place will not be a locked facility. So they'll be able to come and go, what is the vetting process? I mean, who is gonna be coming in here? We don't really know. So, at least I don't know. So, uh, you know, on Main Street, near Del Mar, I don't think it's appropriate to have such a facility. My wife and I have lived here for 32 years. We've raised our two sons here. Uh, there is a need for these facilities, but are these people coming from other cities and towns throughout California? I mean, uh, maybe they should go to the places, uh, within their own communities, within their own counties. So I would encourage the commission to vote no on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hedlund. Next in the queue?
Uh, Chair, I do not see any other raised hands in the queue, although I did-
Is there a vetting process to bring these people in? I mean, how do they know who's a sex offender and who's a criminal, has a-
We will have a time to address these kinds of questions to the applicant and to staff. And we do have our legal, um, people here as well. So I think we're done with public comment.
Chair, I was gonna say, I saw Rich Donald with his hand raised. He's already spoken at public comment, and he raised his hand again.
Yeah, we, we do just have one chance for public comment.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Who wants to kick this off? Do we have any questions? Or Joe, I see your hand up.
Well, I, I certainly, I have lots of questions, but I certainly have some questions for the applicant.
Okay.
Is this the appropriate time to start?
Yeah, this would be a good time to start with that.
Okay, um, and I'm not even sure. I, I think there are multiple representatives of the applicant. So the first question is, there was mentioned that this would not be what they called a free-range facility, meaning that the residents wouldn't be allowed to come and go at their pleasure. Uh, but there was no explanation as to what it would be. So I'd like some clarification of that first. And I have three, three other questions asked, so I don't know if you want me to sort of monopolize this by going through all four questions or trading off with other questions?
Why don't we do one at a time? I mean, you can address all your questions in this time period, but let's get the answers one at a time. Would be helpful for me.
Oh, yeah, no, no, of course. But I mean, after I get my first question answered, you-
Sure. You can, you can keep going with your questions, and we'll move on to others.
All right, so I, I'd like an explanation of what the policy will be if it is not what he characterized as free range.
Okay, and I think that would be, um, Mr. Nardos, if you're still here? Or Ogonis Nardos? Can we unmute him?
Yes, I'm here.
So did you hear the question?
Yeah, I did. And I understand the concerns of the residents. And just for clarification, before a patient gets accepted to start his residential program with us, we have pre-assessment based where they submitted all their information, all their insurance information, personal information, user information, that we are prepared. And just, I don't know, I was not a part of the question, but just for clarification, I already sent a note to, to, to the, to you guys were saying that we're not gonna accept any aggravated felon into this facility, meaning arsonists, sex, registered sex offenders, none of that. Because most of them, they come in, like I said, out of prison. And prison population is not our target and is not gonna be at our facilities. Residential treatment, it's not gonna be locked at night because only jail facilities are allowed to lock, to, uh, lock their clients or patients inside. But 24 hours, it will be supervised by the technicians. And when somebody is getting submitted to start his treatment, we're always telling them that you cannot leave, you cannot leave the premises of the facility without a staff member being present or without getting a consent from the staff member, counselor, caseworker, therapist.
So what happens in the event that the resident decides to disregard that rule and, and leave? Do you prevent him from leaving, or is he allowed to leave?
We, we cannot prevent them from leaving. However, that's gonna be permanent discharge from the program. And if it's not a local residence, then we're making sure that the technician takes the patient back to where it comes. Mostly, it's a referral hospital, wherever they come from.
That, that answered my second question was, when people, for whatever reason, are discharged because they presumably haven't followed the rules, what do you do with them? And so your answer is that in each case, they go back to where they came from? Could you be more specific?
Uh, let's say if they came from some other city and they came with a bus. They're making sure that they get into the bus and getting back to their home. Of course, they can refuse it and on the way, step out of the bus. That's out, uh, we cannot control that. But we're making sure that, uh, the patient, whichever ways he came into the facility, they come back the same way to the same place where it comes from. If it's an airport, then from airport. If it's a train station, bus station, whatever the case is. And for local residents, they're just going home.
So to summarize, you, you would essentially drive him to the bus station?
Yeah.
Presumably, you might wait till he got on the bus. Perhaps you wouldn't, but that would be the extent of your responsibility in that. Okay. Now, there was some really distressing, and I don't know what to make of these allegations of some sort of criminal history with respect to, now, I'm not gonna comment on the accuracy, but I'd like you to comment on that.
I will comment, even though I don't have to, but I'm not ashamed of it. And this program and this type of facility is not the reason I'm alive today because whatever I did in my past, that was all connected with the use, with the ways of making money to get my drugs and stuff. And but grace of God, I'm dealing so for over 10 years now. I'm a certified counselor. And, uh, for three facilities in California and one in Nevada, like I said, I'm a program director, which means, uh, four times, at least three times in the state of California, one time in the state of Nevada. They already background checked me and approved me to be a program director for those programs. And I can give you the names of the programs. You can go in and check that whatever I'm saying is correct. And you can go also to the Department of Healthcare side. And you can go also to the Department of Healthcare side and check Absolute Control Transitional Counseling Center. Were a program director for the last five to six years.
Okay. Well, I certainly can appreciate that you've turned your life around, but should I conclude that there is also some felony convictions in your background?
There was. Now they're reduced to misdemeanor, but there was. And this type of programs are a good opportunity for people who ended up having criminal backgrounds because of usage, because of dependency, because after the successful completion of program, the California gives a chance to reduce your felony to a misdemeanor after you've been seven years with no any other charges. If you're sure that you successfully completed some type of treatment program and your probation was completed successfully, then it's giving you a chance to reduce your felonies to a misdemeanor.
I understand. And my last question, I had, I had asked about the experience operating alternative, other facilities elsewhere. And there was a mention of Lake Hughes operation. And then one of the speakers, one of the callers, mentioned that this was a first responder facility rather than a drug-supported facility. So which is correct?
Yeah. Lake just closed in two years ago because of the location, it was too far away from everything, and it was very hard to kind of reintegrate the patients to the social life. At this point, I'm running the three other facilities, one of which, like I said, Absolute Control Transitional Counseling Center in Burbank, and the other one is a lab treatment center in Las Vegas, and also God's Army Wellness Home in North Hollywood. So then they, all three are going. And besides that, I'm also program director for court-ordered programs, which means I'm a court liaison, working with the nationwide probation departments and courts for domestic violence and the management and death prevention programs.
Very good.
They are all approved through the state of California and the state of Nevada.
Thank you. That's it for my questions right now.
Thanks, Joe. Who wants to go next?
Susan, excuse me. I think perhaps we close the public comment, and we, and some folks might have to recol raise their hands again. So I, we might have a couple of folks that didn't get an opportunity to speak, and I wouldn't want to, you know, miss that.
Okay. So do we have any public commenters that have not spoken yet?
Yes, Chair. I see Nathan Parks with his hand raised, and one other hand raised as well after that. So let me-
All right. Why don't we do those two, and then we'll close public comment and continue?
Copy that. Sounds good.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay. Trying to unmute.
Am I hearing you?
Yes, Nathan Parks. There you go.
Yes, hi. I have a couple of quick questions. The first thing, this isn't a question, this is more of a comment. In looking through the city documents, it appears that there's a North Morro Bay specific plan that, although dated at this point, identifies what the general idea and what the aesthetics of this neighborhood is supposed to look like. And this planned use directly conflicts with a lot of those plans. And essentially, the idea that this specific plan was put out there to create a North Morro Bay area is being ignored completely. So I think it's important to address the idea that there is supposed to be a designated look and feel for this neighborhood. The other question I had is for the applicant. And the vetting process, I'm very curious about how that process works. And so if applicants to this program don't meet certain requirements, like if they're registered sex offenders and that type of thing, then they're not permitted to attend. Is that at the discretion of the owner? And is he allowed to change the way or the people that he approves later on, at a later time, without anybody knowing? And lastly, I'm curious if the applicant will actually be onsite occasionally. So he has many different facilities, and does he come to this facility and make sure everything's being run according to plan in addition to all the other state checks? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. We'll see if we can get some answers to that. And then the last person in the queue, Anthony?
Thank you, Chair. I see Michelle Leichster-Caterrey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Hi, Jen. One thing I had a concern regarding this zoning was, it was stated in the original documentation that the owner had stated that they were going to install privacy fencings along the Main Street entry. That would actually violate the ordinance as far as fencing height along Morro Bay, along the Main Street, whereas it's supposed to be four feet, no higher. That would, you know, violate that ordinance. So I'm curious about that. One thing is more of a statement, is that through these facilities, there's been issues with it starting as a facility for first responders, and it slowly digressed down into finally it's a housing detox rehab. I've worked in Department of Mental Health for over twenty years, and I can tell you that when people detox off of multiple substances, whether it's heroin, meth, alcohol, it's a very painful situation. It's loud. It is physically destructive to the body. There's, it's just, it's a horrible, horrible thing to hear. And to have the neighbors around this facility hear this day and night and the screaming, because I guarantee that these rooms will not be soundproof, will be extremely upsetting. So that is a huge concern, is, you know, how do we stop the rest of the world from hearing somebody going through agony coming off of these substances they've done for years, no doubt? The other thing is, when people are on drugs, they have a dealer. Those dealers do not want to lose their clientele because that's their moneymaker. A lot of the time, those dealers will follow their clients to the town that they are going to be detoxing in because they now have a new place to look for new clients. That is a huge issue. This is a small community with majority of family and retired people. We have a small police department for ten thousand. Suddenly, we're going to have this facility with a ratio of ten patients to a therapist, a doctor, and two other individuals. If one person decides to walk out, suddenly the ratio to patient has decreased. Who's going to step in instantly to back up that ratio if suddenly somebody's running after a patient who says, I'm out of here, I'm not going to do this, I'm gone? You can't force them to stay in. Suddenly, they're on the street. We can't call, you know, you can't force this person in here. You can't lock and chain them. I mean, what do you do? The ratio to patient has deteriorated, then what? So that's all I have to say. I hope that we really look at the people operating these facilities, and it's great that JCO is involved, but they also have some bigger facilities to deal with. So thank you. I appreciate it. Good night.
Thanks for your comments. And unless we have anybody else waiting, we will close public comment.
I have one more raised hand, Chair. Heather Barbus, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. Heather Barbus? Trying to unmute Heather Barbus. I am not, I'm asking, asking Heather to unmute. Somehow you are calling in. It's star six to unmute yourself. Chair, I am not getting any response.
Okay. Okay. Why don't we move on?
Okay. It says here that she's got an older version of Zoom and is not allowing her to speak.
Okay. All right. All right. So we will close public comment and continue with questions for the applicant, for staff, or for the appellant. Jen, do you have anything?
Actually, Michelle brought up, I had written really big in my notes, how we are going, how the applicant's going to restrict noise. So I also had that question. I also had a question about the fencing, what type of fencing, also the fence height issue with that. So I'm looking down through my, oh, and then lastly, I also had written down the same question as one of the previous commenters about, is this a for-profit center? I missed that when I was reading through. Maybe it was mentioned somewhere in there, but I didn't see it. So if I could have that clarified, that would be awesome. And lastly, the applicant mentioned helping people that have had issues with domestic violence. I just would like to have some clarification on that because, you know, they're talking about not having violent residents. And I'm just kind of curious how that plays into it. Is this people that have had issues with domestic violence but haven't been convicted of any felonies? Because you said no felonies. And also, the question was brought up about, is there any way for us to control or be notified if the applicant's requirements have changed in the future? Because currently, we're being told that they can't be felon, they can't have these certain criteria, but how will we know if that changes in the future? And is there any way to guarantee that that will not be changed without notifying the city? And those are my biggest questions for right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Maybe go to staff first on the issue of the fencing and the fence height. See, do we have Scott?
So, Susan, the applicant had asked for privacy fencing, but they cannot put fencing of the height and the type that they wanted inside of the setback area. So the fencing was removed from the plan that we approved for the minor use permit. They are welcome to come back and talk about fencing, and we would review it in accordance with the fencing ordinance. But currently, there is no requirement, same as we would not require for multifamily housing, for them to fence in the residence, and it's not been approved as part of the MUP.
Okay. Appreciate that. And then, as regards to the noise and detoxing, so my understanding is there sort of, I mean, there's probably more than three, but approximately three levels of this kind of program. One would be a detox program. Then you have recovery and supportive housing. And then you would have a sober living halfway house kind of situation, which, which has a lot less supervision. My understanding with this is it is not a detox program, that it is a recovery and supportive housing program, so that people have already gone through the detox process under whatever medical supervision. And then this is their chosen opportunity for rehabilitation and, and, you know, further recovery. So perhaps the applicant could speak to whether I am correct in that analysis. So could we, there you go.
You're absolutely correct, because this is not an ambulatory facility at all, and we don't do detox. However, the people who finish their detox, some of them continue to be on maintenance, which means what all we do is just managing that they're taking their medication on time and as advised by the doctors. As far as the noise, being around through so many facilities, I never heard anybody screaming or anything unless it was a mental problem in well. And in those cases, we immediately transferring the person who does that to a higher level treatment facility, like a hospital, or seventy-two hours old sometimes. But this is, this is not what happening every day, like daily basis. Most of them, they're already finished their detox or continue to be on a maintenance, and they're starting their treatment and recovery process where they're going to be at our facility.
And then there was the question Jen had about domestic violence. I guess I assume this was victims of domestic violence who may have resorted to alcohol or drug abuse, but I suppose it's possible it's perpetrators. Is there any response you have to that question?
When I said domestic violence and anger management would be dealing with, I'm not talking about people who are convicted for domestic violence. I'm talking about when a social worker goes to some home and figures out that one supposes or both of them, because of the drug or alcohol use, they're abusing their kids or they're abusing each other, then we have also to thoroughly approach that and teach them and try to change it. But we're not talking about the people who are convicted for felonies and violently doing any domestic violence, because these patients not even going to allow to do treatment instead of incarceration. Because for those type of patients, they're closed facilities in jail facilities.
Okay. And then I would assume that means also you would not be enrolling sex offenders in the program?
Not at all. No, no type of aggravated felon. And besides, I remember the question was also, is it the courtesy of the owners or administration to change the rules in the future? It's not, because when you're getting approved and licensed by the department, they want your policies and procedures being very correctly stating what type of patient you will take. And you can change it only in one case, if by renewal, you add in a new, new services to it, and they're getting approved, because you could appropriately showing that you can deal with this situation too. But that's not our intention at all.
Okay.
Because sex offenders are a problem for us too, not just, not just the community.
It's kind of a different-
Yeah, it's not our scope of practice at all.
Right. Okay. Let's see. Jen, did we get your questions? I think we did. We had all your questions. Bill?
So my question is for staff. A number of the speakers went to the, to the key and even critical phrase of, we have the right to deny the project and to uphold the appeal based on safety issues. So I'm asking Scott and Nancy and the city attorney, Elena, I think is still on. Can you tell us what is that threshold of safety concerns that would give us that opportunity?
Certainly. So if I may, Nancy? So, you know, the Housing Accountability Act that one of the speakers cited, the purpose of that is actually to ensure that local agencies approve housing rather than restrict it. And so violations of the Housing Accountability Act now come with pretty severe penalties for cities who don't comply. So the purpose of it is, is not to give you tools to deny housing that has to be approved, but it does have, it does allow you to make certain types of findings. So we were talking about housing development projects, which would include this type of supportive housing, could be conditioned. The only thing you can do is, if it's in compliance with the zoning code and the general plan, the only thing you can do is reduce the density. You can't deny it. Okay? You can condition the project to be developed at a lower density when you can make a finding that there are specific adverse impacts. And what that means is that there are significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions, as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete. And furthermore, this lowering of density is only permitted when there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the adverse impact identified pursuant to paragraph one, which is what I just read, other than the disapproval of the housing development project at that density, at the lower density. So would- So, what that means is that you need specific, written, actual evidence. And, you know, there's plenty of case law that says that comments at a public hearing are not quantifiable, specific, written evidence, they're simply comments. People, of course, can, you know, testify to whatever they deem is within their purview, there's no problem with that. But you as a body cannot rely on any of those comments as evidence. It has to be actual evidence, in the way that you would for any kind of entitlement, public hearing, or the way that a judge would require actual evidence. So, the bar is fairly high. The whole purpose behind this law is to ensure that cities build housing. And currently, this use is permitted in this zone, and is in compliance with your zoning code and your general plan. And so, at this moment, you do not have any evidence before you that would justify these types of findings. If something comes up during this hearing, that you can definitely make those findings. But please be mindful that not only is the Housing Accountability Act quite, can result in quite heavy fines, but in addition to that, we are talking about individuals who are protected by state and federal law. Individuals who are recovering from alcohol or drugs are actually considered disabled under state and federal law. Now, individuals who are taking or abusing alcohol and drugs are not, and so of course there's, you know, there's difficulty, right? Because people sometimes fall off the wagon. So, a lot of these concerns are common concerns, but keep in mind that the folks who are recovering from drug and alcohol abuse are in fact disabled and protected by state and federal law. So, I know that that's a very long answer to the question, but I just wanted to make sure that the commission understands that as much as we are response, we want to be responsive to the community's concerns, unless there's actual evidence that these are going to be real issues, you know, simply saying so is not sufficient. So, what would be some examples of some evidence? You know, if this particular operator had other facilities elsewhere that had created concrete problems that had been documented by another jurisdiction, for example. That does not seem to be the case here. So, as I said, long answer, but the bottom line is, the bar is high. The bar is high. So, you know, my impression so far is that there is not enough on the record for you to go down that road, and that's my recommendation.
So, Elena, let me back up just a second. Even if there was evidence of safety issues, you're saying that our only ability would be to condition the project for lesser density. Is that right?
That's correct.
That's a big point. Could you say it again?
Yes, absolutely. So the only, the only way that you can, you can, the only remedy you have, if there's a specific adverse impact in a project that is compliant with your zoning code and general plan, is to reduce the density.
And how do you, how do you gauge the reduction in density? How do you...
Right. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, an assessment that you have to make that would really have to, really requires evidence. You know, you would have to have something in front of you so that you could actually look and say, okay, this many people at this facility is too many people, and here's why. So, for example, if this was, you know, I'm just, it's sort of a hyperbolic kind of example. If this was a learn-to-drive course, right, and you had three people per room, and each person had to have their own car, and that was a requirement of their, of their program, well, they don't have enough parking. So the only way they could, they could do this is if they reduce the density so that they could have enough parking. So, it would have to be, you know, it's hard to say, talk about this in a hypothetical, but the point is that you would have to have something specific that you could point to that is actually going to be a problem, and have absolutely no way to mitigate against that, except reducing the density. Because it's not just, if you have an adverse impact, you can reduce the density, but you also have no, you have to have no other way to mitigate that problem.
And could you just give us an idea? You've sat through all the public testimony. I think you've heard a lot of concerns.
Sure.
A lot of them have been repeated. This is a project that the community is rightfully so asking questions about.
Of course.
What issues that were raised today could evolve to the level of evidence? Is there any way to give that shape?
Well, I mean, at this point, I, you know, if the facility were to operate for a certain amount of time, and a certain series of problems were to, were to arise, then that would be evidence. So if there were specific issues, specific problems with, you know, if they started allowing people into the program that had violent felonies in their recent past, and those folks came out into the community and started causing problems, now that would be evidence. And I realize that nobody wants to get to the point of having these types of things happen, but, you know, there's usually a long road between things starting to go south and something happening, right? We'll know if this facility starts to go south pretty quickly.
So what is, what are, what options does the commission have in terms of additional review around the project?
Well, at this particular stage, not a ton. You can add conditions to the project that are reasonable and that makes sense, based on the kind of use, but you have to remember that you cannot put restrictions on these types of uses that are not put on similar housing projects. So if a multifamily use is not required to give you a listing of their residence and what their criminal background is, you certainly can't do it here.
So you just explained the law to us, and I do understand that that is the law. It doesn't seem fair that this type of use would have to, you know, have no further accountability than a typical residential project. Could you explain why that is the law?
Well, because, well, first of all, I just want to remind everyone that this, this particular project is going to be licensed by the state, and so it has accountability, absolutely. And it will have written policies, and it will have to comply with those written policies. The other thing is that, you know, the reason that a lot of these laws protecting supportive housing and disabled individuals were enacted was because to counteract a lot of the community fears. And, you know, I do understand where those come from. I do understand that. But the reality is that there is an enormous amount of prejudice against individuals who are, who are disabled, especially this type of disability. And so these laws are very vigorously protective of these individuals. I don't necessarily think that they strike quite the balance that we would like them to strike. I do think some of the concerns are absolutely legitimate, but the reality is that if somebody is not using alcohol or drugs, and they are in recovery, they are a disabled person, and they are protected by the law, and there is no reason to fear them if they're still in recovery.
And this is pretty clear.
Yeah, and, you know, we've run across this in other cities, you know, especially with respect to sober living homes, right? They tend to be much smaller, they're not always registered with the state. So it's a balance that the community has to strike, and, you know, there are a lot of advantages to these types of facilities, especially when they're embedded in the community. They are intended to be embedded in the community, in the residential community, because it has been shown that it makes recovery much more successful than if they're stuck in some industrial complex away from people, and sort of shut away from, from everything and everyone. So, there's a lot of studies studying that has gone behind these laws, and there's a lot behind these policies. So, you know, I certainly don't mean to dismiss the concerns of the community, because I think that there are facilities that are not run well, and that can cause problems. That is absolutely a reality. What we have to look at is this particular facility, and how they're going to be set up, and go from there.
Elena, if the commission would want to have a biannual review, would that be considered, I don't know, against the law?
Um, I don't know that it would be considered against the law. I mean, you sort of had to think of it in terms of, you know, number one, this facility is state licensed, right? So they will be having reviews. You could request that they submit copies of those, of inspections and reports. Maybe the facility is willing to come in and do a review every couple of years? I, you know, I don't know. But keep in mind that there is not really a reason in the record for us to require them to do that right now. They are fully in compliance with all the codes, as far as we know.
So would that, would that limit us to even an annual review? That would not be a reasonable condition to ask for?
Well, at this time, I would not recommend it.
One last quick question from me, Elena, a point of contact. I think that would go a long way to helping the community, to have someone directly to talk to if they saw issues, and get a quick response, not having to go through enforcement effort, that sort of thing. What sort of legal efforts do you think would be on a point of contact? And is that something that ask, you know, the owner to voluntarily offer?
I think that is a reasonable condition. That is not something that would restrict them from operating. And, you know, I mean, this information is already available in their application, and it is going to be available in their permit. So, that, that's already available, but there's not anything, from what I can see, I don't think it's a problem to have that as a condition to make sure that there's somebody who can be reached, you know, easily, in case of an issue. So I think that's totally reasonable.
Elena, thank you. Susan, that's my question.
So, if I could just interject, Rich Donald is the onsite general manager, and he's offered already to be the number and the point of contact for the neighborhood, and they can stop by and talk to him, and, I mean, he was very open about his experience and the fact that he's going to be there. So, he has offered to be that point of contact.
Okay, was that it for you, Bill?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Nancy, I have a question for you. Somebody brought up the question about the North Morro Bay specific plan. Do you feel there are any conflicts? As I recall, that was a mixed-use, housing and commercial kind of blended, then it already was a commercial property, so...
Right. It has no effect on the zoning or the right for supportive housing to be used in this area. It did have an effect on the condition by Public Works, that they have to finish their frontage improvements along Main Street.
Right, so they're putting in sidewalk, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. Are there, were there any particular lighting conditions? I don't remember.
They're not changing the lighting in the facility. If they do change some lighting from the current motel lighting, then that would need a review.
Okay. Okay, let me see if I have anything else. One thing, I do want to thank Mr. Nardos for his candor in talking about his history and his past. That's a brave and challenging thing, and I think the goal of a program like this is to rehabilitate people, and when people get rehabilitated, they often want to go back and serve that, that population, to help other people, you know, hopefully come back into society. And I feel like in a way, it's on, it is on all of us as a community to be watchful, to be careful, but also to be helpful, to hopefully help these people rise to the best that they can be, rather than making an assumption that they are going to fail. It's in all of our interests. I think there are people living right next door to us, you know, or across the street, or, you know, you just don't know with addiction issues, who it is, and so, you know, hopefully we can be helpful rather than hurtful in this. Any other questions, discussion? Jen, I, Joe, I see your hand up, and then Jen.
Okay. Two questions, I suppose, one's for Nancy, and then one's for Elena. So, Nancy, you know, I'm assuming with 27 rooms, 54 at maximum capacity, and a sizable staff, and then I suppose some sort of staff for preparing meals. We're talking 70 or 80 people at maximum there. So how, what is the parking requirement for a facility that might be actually having something like 80 inhabitants there?
Well, I think you're presuming 80 inhabitants, but the facility has adequate parking for the request that they've put forth. They did provide us information on the estimated staffing, and it's, I believe, up to 40, but, you know, from 25 to 40, and it probably will change from time to time. But I would also believe that their license would probably mandate the maximum occupancy of the facility, and that's through the state of California.
Well, I thought it was double rooms, 27 rooms. Is that the facility they're preparing?
There's 27 rooms, that is correct, but the presumption that every room was going to be double occupied all the time did not come from the applicant.
No.
I think also there was something in the application where they suggested that the clients would not have vehicles.
That's correct.
Yeah, so really the only vehicles would be staff, and of course, the staffing, you're talking about 24 hours a day, so even if there's 40 staff, you're not talking about 40 vehicles there at any given time, assuming that they don't live onsite.
So to be clear, the patients, if you will, will not have cars, but there has to be parking for roughly 40 employees? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, whatever the employee count is, yes.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a, I mean, the one exception that I see that has any viability, or the ability to make any kind of modifications, is that there simply isn't sufficient parking at the facility.
Well, I don't think we have any evidence, as Elena pointed out, I don't believe we have any evidence that they don't have sufficient parking from the zoning code and the parking requirements. They meet the requirements.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. But what are the requirements?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't memorize the parking ordinance, but we did review that as part of their application.
Okay, all right, fair enough. And then, the question for Elena would be, assuming that this body, despite your valued analysis of what the law states, decided that there were specific adverse effects to either health or safety that could not be mitigated, if we were to make that decision, what would be the consequences of that decision, be it the city, this board? What would likely stem from that?
Well, I don't know what would likely stem from that. What I can tell you is that what could happen is that the city could be, you know, presumably would probably be appealed to the city council, and if the city council were to uphold whatever the planning commission decided, there's a couple of different outcomes that could occur. One is that the state could come after the city, and if we don't have the evidence that they deem sufficient, they could fine the city quite significantly. And we're talking tens, you know, thousands of dollars a day for every day that we're in violation. The other possible consequence is... The other possible consequence is um that if that there there could be a challenge to the city that the conditions and the limitations that we're putting on the project are not based on actual potential adverse impacts, but rather on uh prejudice against the disabled residents. Now, if if that were, if if such a lawsuit were successful, that would be tremendously expensive um against the city because we would not only be faced with damages, but also with attorney fees um for the the plaintiffs. So these these types of housing can be protected uh under state and federal housing laws. And uh and I can tell you that federal housing laws are are very harsh uh for violations of of these codes. So those are potential consequences. Whether that would actually happen, um you know, whether there will actually be those challenges and whether we would lose, I cannot give you an answer right off the bat, right? But what I can tell you is that based on this record, I would be very wary of going forward with modifying the density um of this project.
And I also take it, again, punitive damages would not be an issue. This is not correct.
No, I don't believe that punitive damages are permissible or I think they, you know, they they're, they either are under the Fair Housing Act or the ADA. I don't remember. But I, don't quote me on it, I don't remember exactly, but I do know that damages and attorney fees would definitely be included.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Jen, you had your hand up earlier. And you're muted, huh? There you go.
Sorry.
No worries.
I think I was new to this. Um I have a couple of questions um that just popped into my head. Um one of them is, is there a locals priority as far as applicants? Is there any type of prioritization for for our local population that are suffering from substance abuse? Um or is this just whoever the state assigns to come to our facility here?
How to um how we go to the applicant to answer that?
Okay, I will unmute the applicant.
Thank you.
Just so you know, both the appellant and the applicant have had their hands raised for quite a while.
Okay, I see that. Okay?
Uh as far as preferring anybody as a patient, there is no no preference in that. However, by hiring employees, there is because the closer the employee lives to the workplace, the better for us, of course, especially if we're talking about technicians. And also I raised my hand earlier to just making a clarification that we're not applying for fifty-four beds, we're applying for twenty-six, which means not every room will be occupied, as as you can see. And there's not going to be more than twenty-six patients at the time on a facility premises, which means all our staff will be consistent, maximum of ten people at a time, which gonna, uh which will look like we're gonna need only ten parking spaces at a time.
Thank you, that's that's very helpful. And and so there is no um preference in terms of your clients for local versus out of the area?
No, that's illegal because we're based on first-class base.
Got you. Okay, and and this is um individuals apply to be in the program?
Yes.
Oh, it is voluntary. These are people seeking sobriety and a healthier life.
Yes.
Shoot, I had another question for you on that, but I'm going to let it go. Maybe it'll come back into my head. Um Jen, you had another question?
Yeah, um I had a question about the other applicant, um Brian. Um I I don't know how to, I'm sorry, I'll I'll probably butcher the last name. Um Der Vatanian, Bertanian, I apologize if I mispronounced that. I would like to know more about his experience, if we can get that. You know, I think it's important to hear that. We've heard about the experience of the other applicant, but we haven't really heard much about the other person that is applying.
Uh Brian Der Vatanian, um I do not have a physical involvement or actually involvement in any of these facilities. But I um run them as CPA. I'm CPA of my profession. Um I do take care of their financials and uh but I'm not involved and I'm not licensed to be involved in these kind of facilities or treatments. Only my my role would be management and oversee um the business side of it. I have no involvement whatsoever. As I said, I have no license uh to treat or anything except the financial aspect of the project.
Okay, so so let me just get the clarification. So you're the applicant, but you do not have any experience with this type of facility?
I do have experience, financial experience. I've brought down. Uh I have lots of clients in same kind of facilities, but I do not have involvement, meaning they pay, which I cannot even be involved in the facilities, uh treatments or any kind of um management or program management per se.
Um why don't we let um Ms. Smith have her hand up? See if there's anything she wanted to respond to?
Sorry, I just want to correct one thing before.
Okay, all right.
I apologize.
Go ahead.
Yes, I I apologize. I misread the Housing Accountability Act. You can disapprove the project or condition it to be lower density. So my apology about that. I I was just reading it and misread it, so I wanted to correct that so that you're clear.
So it could be lower density than twenty-six?
Right, so the the, if you found that there was a specific adverse impact, you could either disapprove or approve upon the condition that the project be developed at a lower density.
Okay, so could we unmute Ms. Smith and see if she had a response to one of the questions?
Yes, absolutely. Ashley, you are unmuted.
Oh, great. Hello again. Um Elena, I just had a question of what you just stated. So to um, do we have to have a document to overturn the oh, sorry, I'm all jarbled with my notes here, uh the Fair, the Housing Accountability Act? Can you repeat what you just said?
Does the commission wish me to answer that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh yes, certainly. Uh so let me tell you, this is section, so if anybody wants to look it up, I will tell you the government with section number, so you can also look at it. And it's, uh, let's see, I wrote it down. It's the government code section six, five, five, eight, nine, point five, uh subdivision J, okay, under number one. And what it says is "When a proposed housing development project complies with applicable objective general plan, zoning and subdivision standards and criteria, including design review standards, in effect at the time that the housing development project's application is determined to be complete. But the local agency proposes to disapprove the project or to impose a condition that the project be developed at a lower density, the local agency shall base its decision regarding the proposed housing development project upon written findings supported by a preponderance of the evidence on the record that both of the following conditions exist. The first is that the housing development project would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health unless the project is disapproved or approved upon the condition that the project be developed at a lower density." As used in this, as used in this paragraph, "A specific adverse impact means a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective, identified, written, public health or safety standards, policies or"
It's to be written.
"as existed on the date the application was deemed complete." And also, uh there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the adverse impact identified pursuant to paragraph one uh other than the disapproval of the housing development project or the approval of the project upon the condition that it be developed at a lower density.
Okay, thank you so much for repeating that. So being in close proximities to school is not a documented public safety concern. That wouldn't count?
Well, simply saying that it's close to a school would not.
Would not, okay. And um have you looked into the reasons why the Lake Hughes recovery was closed? Do we know that there were no fines or they weren't in in compliance? They were out of compliance with anything? Because that seems like that could serve as um documented evidence, correct?
So that is not something that I would have looked at, but um maybe Nancy can answer that question. It, so, okay, so that that would be on us to research then.
So, I mean, I'd have to research that as well, but it it was my understanding that um other operator experiences in different areas weren't relevant to how this project in this area would operate?
Okay, um but that just seems um uh questionable. Why would you approve it so quickly if if you hadn't researched and looked into as why their previous facility had closed down?
I'd like to take a pause here, Chair Stewart. We should be taking questions from, uh, as staff and/or city attorney um from the public. Um they should be addressing all their questions to the commission. And the commission then could give direction to us to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I think Ms. Smith, we've got your questions and concerns. Um I I think what I would see if um our attorney or Ms. Hubbard could answer, it seems to me with these, that that our job as planning commission is to look at whether this application um the understanding is that that it's a valid application and that there are not a whole lot of um areas where we can make changes in this. And that getting getting this application approved is subsequent to them going and getting licensed by the state. So the state, I would imagine, will be doing all sorts of vetting and looking at their um background and and, you know, whether there are any issues with licensing them or not. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, did any other commissioners have any other questions or shall we open for discussion? Jen?
Sorry, I have to prolong this some more. Um I just, I had a question earlier. I just needed to ask it. And it's um actually to our city attorney. Um just because our community is is so concerned from what we've heard so far, is there um something that you, Elena, can can some direction you can give to our community if there, you know, if this goes through and everything, you know, happens and this facility starts operation? Um and there are things that occur, there's, you know, things are happening in the community with maybe, you know, the the residents. Um the fire and police are having to be called constantly. Let's say the worst-case scenarios are happening. Um can you walk us through what it looks like if there is sufficient evidence for um the permit to be revoked? Or it, how does that look and 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 how does that happen? And how easy is that for that to happen, or is it a really long, hard process? Does that make sense?
Yes.
I don't know, but.
Uh yes, I see that Scott popped up. Did you want to say something or did you want me to address this?
I'll, I'm, I'll start and then I'll turn it over to you, Elena, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um so, so this is, you know, that aspect, you know, the aspect that you raise, Commissioner Ford, is no different than any other business operation that that that, you know, functions in the city of Morro Bay. I mean, we have municipal code requirements that you have to operate within. So say it was something that was noisy. Well, we could send code enforcement over there and say, hey, there's our noise requirements. You have to comply with these. Um if they were constantly having, you know, activity that generated, you know, police calls out to the site, then potentially they're in violation of other sections of the municipal code. And maybe they end up back here in front of the commission reviewing their permit. Um but, you know, that's, I mean, we would treat them and that process would be not dissimilar to any other any other folks that are out there that are violating the city municipal code or and/or other state laws, those types of things. So and then I would give it to Elena to expand.
Right, I, the only thing I would add to that is that because they do have state licensing and they have to comply with state law, there is also a state law enforcement component to this um that, you know, we don't really have jurisdiction over, but um I would imagine that the loss of their license would be uh quite um financial hit. Um because then they wouldn't have access to all kinds of programs and and insurance and all these things that come with with the state licensing. So violations of their of their license would be significant, I think, for them. So that's another aspect, that's another enforcement avenue for for us. You know, and there's also, i- if if things really, really go south, there is what's called public nuisance abatement, and that is available for any property, any use that goes sideways. This happens in residences, it happens in restaurants, it happens all over, all the time. Sometimes there are operators that, or owners or residents that are just, you know, they make noise, they they they're either, maybe they're hoarders, they throw trash all over the place. And uh we do have the nuisance abatement procedures available to us. Um and so if if they do create any kind of a nuisance, and, you know, nuisance procedures are fairly broad. So if if they um if they consti- they constitute a public nuisance, we have that avenue as well.
And I have one last question. Um do we have, is it lawful, lawful for us to pause this and get sufficient evidence of um I'm not suggesting it, I'm just asking, um is it lawful for us to to pause, to ask for more evidence of past facilities' reasons for closure? Or any other evidence to either oppose or support this um project?
Um yes, I mean, you can always ask for additional evidence of how other facilities might be run by these operators. Keep in mind that um denying a project or delaying a project on the basis of neighborhood opposition without actual evidence um can constitute discrimination. And so how you respond to the comments uh that are made by the public and the opposition by the public, and depending on, you know, some comments are legitimate, some maybe just fierce, uh that can affect um how a court will look at whether you, um, you know, if you end up denying the permit and the court finds that the denial was based directly, was was based primarily on opposite neighborhood opposition and not real evidence, um your decision will be overturned. And I have seen, I have seen case law where the the body reviewing the permit had both legitimate evidence and discriminatory comments by the the public. And the courts, and it doesn't take much for the courts to to say this is discriminatory, okay? Anything that doesn't have actual tangible evidence, they will just deem to be discriminatory. Whether it's legitimate or not, that's how they look, look at it. And if there's two grounds upon which a permit can be denied for housing for the disabled, um at least the federal courts will go with, you had a discriminatory intent, your decision is overturned. So yes, you absolutely can request more evidence, but be very mindful that you really need to focus only on evidence. Um and it has to be pretty strong that there's going to be a problem at this particular faci- facility.
Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions for? Anybody else have any other questions for staff? Or shall we open for discussion? Okay, let's, let's kick off what we want to do next. Anybody have a comment? I know.
I'll, I'll, I'll start, I guess. You know, I support these kinds of facilities in communities because I think they're essential. And I'll, and I'll hold off, you know, on whether I think it's well-suited for a community as small as Morro Bay. I think this is an example of where the state saw a real need to step in and do something. And it's a complicated area in which to do something, if they start to tailor it to the individual community, communities. So I think the state in its wisdom said, we will create this right to establish this kind of facility, and then if things, problems arise, we'll address those situations where the problems arise, which, you know, the citizens of the community, I don't think would take much solace in because it means you have to do it until a problem is created and is is obvious. And this is compounded by a fair amount of notorious anecdotal evidence of of this state not doing a particularly good job of regulating some of these facilities and things go haywire despite the oversight of the city, of the of the state. And with respect to looking in more detail at the operating history of other facilities by the by the applicant, you know, I, I, I just don't see that the state is going to, is going to find that particularly persuasive, particularly, I mean, if if it wasn't so egregious as to bar them from additional applications like the one they have here, I just, I don't think that's likely to turn out that way. So I'm, you know, I hate to say it, but I, I think our, our hands are actually tied. That's why I, I sort of pressed the issue of what the legal consequences would be. I, I, I don't think we can do anything other than, you know, approve this. And I would say to the people of Morro Bay who might be appalled by that opinion, you know, the, it's left to the community to really look at this facility and see how it in fact is operating, observe closely, make notes, record things, so that there is a body of evidence should the need arise to actually go back to the regulating agency and say, look, this has not gone the way they said they would go, and we want to change this or eliminate it. That's, and I don't, and I don't think that that ability in any way could be handled by the community development office, even if they were willing to do it. It really has to be a kind of grassroots, a community effort. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Bill, have you got any comments?
Yeah, I do. I guess I'd just quickly like to say thank you for everybody who commented. In my experience, these can be very difficult cases, but it's important that I think we do the right thing. And to not discriminate is the law, and it is our responsibility. I like what Joe said, in the sense that this this commission is interested in hearing how every case goes as they, you know, months or years beyond, no different for this case than any other case. To hear from the community is, you know, is it working? That would be what we would allow for any, any project that came before us. So with that being said, you know, as soon as everybody's ready, I think we need to make a motion to support staff's recommendation.
Jen, did you have anything further?
Um, just that I, I, you know, I, I, I hope that one day we can remove the stigma of facilities of this sort, because I feel like, you know, this, this type of facility is, I would love for it to be looked at just like an urgent care moving into the neighborhood or anything like that. I'm, I'm a little concerned that we don't have a lot of evidence, you know, if we were to pause to get more evidence on past facilities and whatnot, that we could be legally, you know, we could be in violation. So, you know, I don't feel great about this decision, but I feel, you know, as has been said before, our hands are tied, and I don't, I don't like that, I don't feel comfortable with that. But I also know that we cannot discriminate, that's the law, and we also can't deny a project based on speculation. So with that, you know, I guess, I think we should bring it to a vote.
Okay. I certainly, I, I think we have to have some trust in the process, that the state is the next level that looks much more closely at the licensing and background checks and everything and in the people involved with this. So, you know, that's not really our job, that will be the next and and bigger level of of oversight and and viewing this. Nancy, one question I have for you, just looking at the resolution in Exhibit A, it's a resolution upholding the appeal, and we would be denying the appeal.
Denying, yeah, it's just a typo on the heading, the rest of the resolution is accurate.
That's what I figured, I just wanted to make sure that we got that right.
Now I know you really read this stuff.
I read it, girl, okay. Okay, then who would like to make a motion? Don't all jump at once. Bill, you want to do it?
Yes, I'm happy to make the, a motion to support staff's recommendation and deny the appeal.
We have a second.
I have a second now.
Thank you, Joe. All right, and then I believe, is that phrased correctly for you, Ms. Hubbard? All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Roshan?
Yes.
And Sheriff Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we need a little break or can we move on? You want a break? Okay, let's take five minutes. Item B two, discussion or review of the special use permits at the Old Morro Elementary School site at 1130 Napa. Scott, this one is you.
Okay, I have a brief PowerPoint, so I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, should be able to see the screen. So, as was stated, the item before you this evening is review of special use permit, UPO 244, was approved back in 2004 by the city council on recommendation from the planning commission, and it covers alternate uses for the Morro Bay Elementary School site that's located at 1130 Napa, and is shown in the map on the screen, on the left-hand side of the screen. Owner of the, the property is the San Luis Cultural School District. Let's see. And the list of uses that were considered or that were approved are the ones noted on the screen, I'm not going to read each one of them. This is a list that went before the planning commission and was ultimately approved by city council, and very closely mirrors the allowed uses, but not exactly, that are the subject of specifically zoning code section 17.30, point 030 S1. These are again are on the screen in front of you, and I do have a slide a little bit later to talk about the actual uses that are still out there, are still operating on the site currently. The item went before council on November 22nd, 2004, where it was approved, and then the following actions that had to take place after the approval was the, the school district was required to submit a school utilization plan, it included a site plan that outlined the uses and the locations on the site. Our city records apparently look all that fantastic, so I think a part of the, the site utilization plan was that list of uses that I showed you earlier, and then I have been able to locate a site plan that showed where they were putting the uses and what uses they were putting where. And then there's also this other section that's 1730030 S3E that requires a special use permit to be reviewed by the planning commission biannually through the public hearing process. And from what I can tell, and, because I didn't see any instance, at least I saw no staff reports anyway, where that ever came back before the planning commission since 2004. In fact, until Susan raised the question, Commissioner Stewart raised the question, previous planning commission meeting as a future agenda item, I was completely unaware that the section existed. So we are here today to review it. This is the plan. The uses that are out on site are shown left, so it's Copper Dragon Books, Calvary Shoreline Church, there's adult school out there, Family Partnership, Terry Brown Art Studio, Outside Now, those are the operating uses on the site. You can kind of see them in the color-coded map on the screen. Don't have much to add beyond that, the uses are consistent with the, with the overall uses that are allowed in the zone and that were pretty, that were discussed as part of the approval, so they are consistent. So the item in front of you is to look at it and have a discussion and certainly ask questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can. Other than that, I will stop sharing my screen and turn it over to you. There we go.
There we go. Thank you, Scott. Okay, any expertise? Anybody talk with their old-school principal? Yeah, okay.
Sheriff Stewart, I do have one thing to add, and I got to deal before we started getting into questions and comments. We have received some correspondence, and all of you have probably seen it, that relates to potential future uses of the sites, redevelopment of the site, issues related to historic significance of the site, all of those things are not in front of you this evening, and I would strongly urge you not to speak to them. That item is not agendized, and I don't want to sort of taint any future, you know, scenario where the planning commission is reviewing similar-type applications. Other than that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Perfect, thank you for that. Anybody have any questions for staff? Joe?
Well, yeah, if someone wanted to put a hotel or retail sales or residential, they would have to come to the city council and add to that list, is that correctly reading it?
Well, so I guess, I mean, that's actually a really good question, Commissioner Graffia. So if someone, they wanted to propose a use that wasn't out there, they wanted to put it in one of the buildings, they would just come to us, at staff level, and submit their application to put the use in the building. Really, how that happens is, it really comes to us through, either they reach out to us directly, or it comes to us through, either they reach out to us directly, or it comes through the business license process to utilize or occupy existing space that's out there, and then we kind of go back and look at what's allowed there and would permit it. Short of that, if it were something larger, like you talked about, we wanna build a hotel out there, well, that would go through a regular discretionary review process that the Planning Commission would see, and then you'd be making recommendations to City Council based on the size of the site there. So, you would see the hotel, and you would, you would give a recommendation on the conditional use permit and coastal development permit, and then the process would be, that recommendation would move on to the City Council, and they would make the final decision based on the size of the site.
And then I came across, somewhere in the file, there was a mention about one of the old-time Morro Bay families originally gave the land to the city, something like that. I was just wondering, I'm assuming then that there's no, no deed restriction on what could be done with the land.
I have never seen one, and when I asked the school district about it, they didn't have any information related to that either. I asked, I didn't ask them currently, like recently, related to this process. I asked them previously, related to some other things that they were looking at.
Okay, that's it.
Bill? Scott, a quick question. So, I know you told us it's not agendized, so let me ask it this way. Betty Winholtz talked about Items I and J allowing Housing by Right on the site. If the Commission was interested in talking about that, how would we agendize that for the future?
We don't have applications in house related to this, so you don't talk about it. You only talk about items that are, that are either applications that are in front of us, or larger, like we're doing master plans, general plans, zoning code stuff, and that's how you, you talk about, you know, those types of items. Or more generically, you could talk about housing, certainly, and we could have that type of conversation. But as it specifically relates to a location, it's, it's not appropriate really to speak to those things if it's not, you know, something that's under review by the, by the department.
So, if we were interested in the historic nature of the site, for example, you don't see how that could be a future agenda item?
It can, it can be. You would have to make that request to City Council. That's part of your bylaws, and I could help you with that. So, if the Commission is interested in having that conversation, you have to make that request of Council that allows you to go talk about that, because it's not part of your work program at this point. Your work program's actually terrible, and the only thing your work program includes right now, pretty much, is general plan, local coastal program, and zoning code update.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Bill, I would encourage you to join the Historical Society of Morro Bay and get more information, of which, expertise, I'm a board member. But there's, you know, you live in a great little town. It's interesting to learn the history of its people and places, so. But until we have a proposal, a project before us, I think it's certainly hard to address specifics of anything when there's nothing specific. Jen, did you have any questions?
No, since we're not talking about anything future. Other than, I mean, how are things going with all the current tenants? I mean, is that something we can, you know, I mean, is it working well? Same thing you said, Susan, I actually, I have a connection there because I used to work at UMCC, who no longer is there. So, I'm very familiar with this area, because I worked there for, like, seven years. It's a great property. It's beautiful. The, the architecture thing is really, really, really beautiful. So, yeah, I mean, is that something we can discuss? I mean, how, how are, is it?
I think we're challenged a little bit by the COVID year, because I think some of the programs were really going gangbusters until things got shut down. I know the revamp people did fold, but I remember before they decided to close, walking through there and seeing them out there doing the, exercising outdoors still. I know that-
I was one.
Yeah, maybe I saw. I know the church people were still using the office space and allowed some of the board members and I to walk through the building and take pictures. And I think there was a person in there doing schooling via Zoom with her students. So, you know, again, I think there were a lot of good community uses for the buildings that kept it from being sort of a derelict, empty space. So, in my mind, it would be a positive to be able to continue those kinds of, of uses, both to use that space, and it was providing a charter school, you know, the, the church community was making good use of it. I don't, I didn't actually know about the books in there, and then the artist, the studio, the Terry Brown Art Studio, that's kinda cool, too. So, it's, it just suggests that there are a lot of positive reuses for old buildings like that. So, I think, if there's no other questions for staff, we should open for public comment. Do we have, and, and we will hear the comment, but keep in mind, we, as Scott said, are not able to act, respond, or make any motions about future potential uses for the site that may or may not come before us in the future. Okay, so, Anthony, do we have some people in the queue? I see Betty Winholtz with her hand up.
Yes, and Rich Donald, who I believe was with the last item, but his hand has been raised for a while, so I'm gonna go ahead and unmute Rich. Okay, Rich Donald, I'm unmuting you. At this point, I'm not getting any response, so I'm gonna go ahead, and phone number ending in 365. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, this is Natalia. I'm here again, and I got a phone call from somebody informing me that this property was going to be discussed. I'm very interested in it. I've been, again, involved in it as a parent of five children that attended school there, and I, I have used it myself. We, as a soccer team, played on the field there for years, and I think people still do that. And it's, it's a priceless resource for the community as it is. I currently do Tai Chi on the grounds with some friends, and it's an historic building, vis-à-vis what has occurred with that motel situation. I would like to have some guidelines myself for how not to get into a situation where we're hemmed in and can't operate our community as we wish, because, you know, when, when that was all being played out, I was involved in some things that were preoccupying my time, and I feel like I have not been a good citizen of my community by allowing factions that come in and think they know the community, and they make rules and regulations about what should happen here, and, and then all of a sudden, we don't have the community we once had. And I don't wanna see that happen. I, I know the story about the people who gifted the land and are upset about it being, put it to another use, and I certainly am aware of how that goes, as I'm also a member of a family that had that happen to them. So, you know, just on many levels, I'm very interested in this, and I, I don't wanna see an application made for which some changes to policy there suddenly allow it to happen. So, I'd like some guidelines along there, some, some help as a concerned citizen.
Thank you, Natalia. Okay.
Chair, I see one more hand raised. Betty Winholtz.
Perfect.
Okay, Betty, asking you to unmute. You're unmuted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. This is Betty Winholtz. As part of this review, then, by the Planning Commission, are you taking note that businesses have been successful here, that the soccer field has continued to be used, that it's been a profitable relationship with the school district to allow them to run these businesses and continue to allow the fields to be used? Will you be making that evaluation as part of this review? Secondly, since the definitions of, if, I guess my question is, do the definitions of I and J include, beyond what's already at the school district, if someone made the application to bring in housing, is that included in the definition of I and J? Not asking about any specific project, but would you see someone coming in and asking about that as a business option, as a city option? Who would be bringing that forward that would qualify under I and J? I or J, I should say. And then, just, just a comment that Mr. Graham made about your work program. It seems to me that state law allows the Planning Commission, because you're mentioned in state law, as having certain responsibilities, and are you not then allowed to do what you perceive to be as part of your job under state law unless the City Council says you can do it, or are you quasi-independent of the City Council because of state law? Thank you.
Anybody else in the queue?
Thank you, Chair. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay, hang on. I'm taking a few notes here. Okay.
Just have one raised hand.
I was gonna say, I just saw Judy with a hand up.
Okay. Okay, you're unmuted.
Well, I feel like my tongue is tied. Scott has pretty much said, "Don't talk about what might happen to Morro Elementary," and I'm wondering why I'm not, as a citizen, permitted. You are talking about Morro Elementary. You are our Planning Commission. I do believe in you, and I trust you, but I don't know why you would wanna stop us from talking. I appreciate Natalia's comments. They were heartfelt. Our history has a big value. Morro Elementary is a historic, it's an architectural, historical building. When my son was in fourth grade, we did a study on the historical value of Morro Elementary, and we went through the microfiche over at Cal Poly, and we learned all about the building of it and the county. People came from Paso. They came from all over. It was a party. It was days long. And I'm just hoping that as our Planning Commission, you will not ignore the pleas of the people and the community and the children, that you will continue to let our community, all of the people in our community, not just a selected few, but everyone, use this historical site, and let it become, let it evolve into something even better, but keep the foundation of a historical building for Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Judy. And I don't see any other hands.
That is correct.
I do wanna respond to Judy just quickly. Citizens are always allowed to offer their comments. We, as a Commission, can't discuss what, what is beyond or not on our agenda, because that has to be posted for the community to be able to review it. And I have some background noise. Somebody must have their, their mic on. So, your, your comments are valued. Everyone's comments are valued. I think if and when a project is proposed, there will be many opportunities for public comment and input. It is school district property, doesn't belong to us, but I am hopeful that the school district has, they've already done some outreach and sort of feeling around for what might be viable on that property, and I hope they do a lot more of that. I think they do need to understand that they are part of this community, too. So, hopefully, hopefully you don't feel railroaded in this. Questions? Betty Winholtz was asking about our review of this. I, I do think, and Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we're really just looking at the use of the building, not the fields, because I don't know that anybody is leasing the fields from the school district.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah. So, I, I know there's been T-ball and soccer and all sorts of things, even some part of our own rec department.
I believe we have an agreement with them. The rec department does, yeah.
But probably not a financial-
I don't think so.
Okay. Yeah, nothing that I've ever heard of. And then she asked about whether the definitions in, in I and J included housing, or, you know, sort of business housing uses. And, and what I wondered with that, would the state housing codes and requirements supersede our own, you know, so?
I mean, so that's a, that's a fair question to ask on school district property, like, how do we have authority? But thankfully, you know, I mean, this is an instance where we are in the coastal zone of California, and they are required to come and get a coastal development permit from us if they wanna do development. They can't, you know, in other areas, they don't have to get development permits from the local jurisdiction necessarily. But in coastal cities, you do. And so, they would, they are forced to come through us, you know, and I think they would do it anyway, because they need to engage the city. So, in all my conversations with them, related to anything that they wanna do, that, you know, I've heard about, related to redevelopment, they plan on doing a significant amount of engagement with the public. So, I mean, that part of it, I would say, they, they all realize it's necessary. But they're not unlike us, you know. They have a board. They have to have public meetings, and, and they can't really go do anything unless the, they're, you know, the school board tells them to go do it, right? So, they have to have these conversations, and they're kind of open, and, and so they can give direction to their staff to go look into things like this. So, so, yeah, I mean, that's what they're doing, and that's what I've heard about related to redevelopment of the site, is their staff was doing what the board directed them to do, and I think, you know, citizens of Morro Bay were surprised by that. But it is a little bit how the process plays out when you're a public agency. You have to do things in public.
Right.
So.
Well, I will say, the Historical Society has been working for a long time to set up a meeting with them on-site, with Mr. Prater and school board members, and we actually got one. We finally have a date scheduled. So, I, I think, and, boy, I would love to see, I think it was Judy's, said she and her kids had done some stuff on the history of this campus, so, you know, get in touch with Glenn Silaway and the Historical Society, and we'd love to be able to share that information. Anyhow, any other questions from any commissioners about this review of the permits? No? And I don't think, do we need any sort of action taken on this, Scott, or just that we have-
I, I, yes, I guess I could have put receive and file. I, I didn't know what the, I didn't know what the Commission was gonna do with it. You know, this is, and I'll take a step back here, 'cause I didn't explain this to begin with. We kind of did things a little differently back in 2004, and so, the action that was taken by the Planning Commission for recommendation to Council didn't include a resolution. The action that was taken by Council was a voice vote, didn't include a resolution. So, we don't do that anymore, and, you know, were we doing these things? I would be documenting them through resolution so we know what everybody said, we know what the- what the findings are and those types of things. Um, so I wasn't sure where the commission would get, was gonna go or whether you would find issue with something or want me to go do more work on something and come back or, or what have you, at which point I would be bringing a resolution. I was gonna change something. And, and we didn't, and the school district, you know, didn't come because I, I think they didn't feel like, feel really much to review. Their uses were consistent with the permit and that was about the extent, so.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody have anything else on this? All right, then I think, um, we'll just say receive and file. All right, thanks. Thanks for doing that work on that, Scott. Appreciate it. Um, again, I think, um, most people in the community are aware something may be coming down the road. Um, so I think sort of starting with what happened in 2004 and moving forward, um, gives us all a sense of, of what this place has meant in our community. And, um, we'll, we'll see what happens next.
I think it's great that they're, you know, re-engaging with the community as far as the Historical Society goes. I know, you know, once COVID hit, they kind of, you know, put everything down and were just kind of focused on dealing with that. So it's great that maybe they're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel as well and are, are starting to engage in some of these other types of, um, things that they were doing pre-COVID. So that's, that's actually, um, good news, I think.
Yeah, I think so too. All right, moving on, um, we have no new business. Um, it always says no unfinished business and I always feel like it's all unfinished business, but I don't think there's anything specific there. Um, any planning commissioner comments or suggestions for future agenda items? Everybody's tired. Okay. Um, Community Development Director comments?
Um, I started being off with this and I'll make my final plug, assuming there's anybody out there listening to us right now, um, that we do have a vacancy on the planning commission. There's only four of you sitting there. Um, would be great if, uh, folks would, uh, give some consideration to applying. Um, uh, the window for that closes on April 30th. So, uh, and the application and the link to that can be found on the front of the city's website, uh, webpage, um, uh, under hot topics. So, um, that'd be, if anybody's interested, please look there. Or if you have questions, you can certainly contact me. My information is also on the city's website. Scott Graham, Community Development Director, search me in the main search thing and I'd be happy to talk to you and keep the game, get you to submit an application.
Excellent. Um, and I will say, again, it's a great group of people. I think, um, it's always helpful to understand your, how your city functions from inside one of these commissions or committees. I have a lot of faith in it and, and in the process. Um, some people have said, oh my gosh, it's so much work with that general plan out of the way. I think, um, the workload is significantly easier to handle. Um, so I hope we get some, some interested people out there who want to join us. All right, then I think we are ready to adjourn. Our next meeting will be May 4th, 2021 at six o'clock, again via the Zoom teleconference. And I hope you all have a good couple of weeks until then. Thank you.
That all.
Thank you.